All right, Mr. Mayor, it is now one o'clock and we are all here and ready to go.
Good afternoon. It is 1:00 PM, December 3rd, 2020, and time to call to order the Rancho Mirage City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. I'm actually going to have Jesse Eckenroth, our Public Works Director, do it today.
Well.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you all. And Kristi, would you take your roll call, please?
It's actually Johnny. Councilmember Kite.
Present.
Councilmember Smotrich. Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wile.
Here.
Mayor Hobart.
Here.
All present.
So we have a quorum, we have unanimous attendance, and we move to our city manager for non-agenda public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now is the opportunity for any member of the public that would like to make a comment that is not on today's agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker, please. If you're participating remotely, you would press *9 on your telephone or the Raise Hand button on the Zoom platform to make a non-agenda public comment at this time. Before we go to the remote audience, let's go to the audience that is here in person, and I have a speaker card, Patty Newman.
Thank you, and good afternoon, all here and otherwise. Patty Newman, my husband, Arthur, and I have been residents of Rancho Mirage for almost 32 years. Next month will be our 32nd anniversary. During those 32 years, we've been happy to work with the city and for the city and the greater community at large, as I'm sure many of you know. Arthur was served on the city council back in the 90s, and I want to give a quick shout out right now to Joni, who sends her regards to Arthur. She worked with Arthur at that time, I'm happy to say. She's still here, 25 years, which is great. I'm here today to talk about something that is really troubling to me. I sense a huge sense that there's a big conflict of interest going on somewhere within the city, council and staff otherwise. Conflicts of interest are not new to any of us. It's rampant, as we know, throughout our government, all the way to Washington, DC. Los Angeles has got a huge problem going on right now, the city council, and as we all know, the history of Palm Springs has been rocked by serious conflicts of interest. And so why do I mention that today? I'm very concerned, as you may have known from previous comments I've made, about the city's absolute ignoring of zoning requirements and against the wishes of nearby residents with the proposed In-N-Out Burger in this time of horrible upheaval in our country. I want to remind the council and the staff, many of you were not around then, but close to a decade ago, the council, at that time spearheaded by Richard Kite, took legal action against the Palm Springs Unified School District because they were going to build the Rancho Mirage High School. And some residents, not even close to the physical building or school, objected. And so the city spent, thanks to Mr. Kite and the rest of the council, on behalf of nearby, or some would say nearby, not really close, if you know the area, a lot of taxpayer money and delay in building the school cost Rancho Mirage taxpayers twice, not only what we put into our school district, but what we, as taxpayers, put into the city's coffers. Yet, another issue of planning has come up, which is a zoning issue for one, and certainly the high school was not a zoning issue. And number two, against the objections of the nearby residents are considering some kind of spot zoning to put in an In-N-Out Burger very, very close to residential properties without regard to the concerns of those residents. I'm not here to be opposed to In-N-Out. I don't care what they do, but I do care what happens in my city. And if In-N-Out Burger is not going to go in Palm Desert on 111 and was turned down completely by Palm Springs, why does Rancho Mirage need it on 111? I sense a serious conflict of interest, and that's what I want us all to look at ourselves and what I want the city staff and the city council to be very careful about, because you're treading on what I consider dangerous water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else, anyone else here in person that wants to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, seeing no one else here in person, we will go to our remote audience and Mr. Brad Anderson. Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage at 37043 Ferber Drive. Anyway, I wanted to mention a few things. First would be, at the last meeting, I made comments then concerning closed session items and reporting out, which the city manager did too. But I'm concerned because of this dire in the way that it was done. Apparently, the minutes reflect that, too. At 3:40 PM, apparently, he reported out, and then at 3:41, adjournment. But again, there was no adjournment that was recorded that I seen on the video. So that's something you should really concern yourself with, because that's not, not right, reporting something that didn't even happen. So anyway, and that's really a council decision, that's not the city manager's place to do that. And the next item, thank you, would be something I talked about before, too, and that's code compliance. I noticed in the minutes it stated that I got a citation, but again, I'll emphasize that citation is wrongfully issued to me, and it has no bearing on my property. And the reason I say that is because it appears to be reprisal actions for probably other involvements that I have with the city and the city attorney and the city manager now. So anyway, and that's all I have on that, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that would like to make a non-agenda public comment, we will close that portion of the meeting, and we will move to council member comments. So councilmember Kite, do you have a comment today?
Thank you. No.
Thank you. Councilmember Smotrich.
Yes, I do have a comment, but I have a couple of comments, because I wanted people to be aware of a couple of things. Number one, of course, and there's been a lot of advertisement about it, is getting tested for COVID at our library. It is safe, it is easy, it is free of charge. You register online, and just go to the library when your time slot appears, and get yourself tested. The second thing is Desert Ark. And although they are not open to clients, and they are not open for the sale of Sees Candy at this time, they are open for shredding, and recycling, and janitorial services, and landscaping. And they recycle computers, cardboard, metal items, and they will even send a truck to your home or your business to pick up whatever recycling items you have that you'd like to dispose of. So their telephone number is 760-404-1370. You can also locate them online at Desert Ark. And I would suggest calling their telephone number, just so you can find out for sure their hours of operation, when they would be open, and whatever you would like to discuss with them and make it happen. I also wanted to move on to something a little bit more fun, because I know we're all very much cooped up in the house. Jason, you can remove that now. We're all cooped up in the house, and we're getting through this pandemic together, but for those of us who are a little bit tired of cleaning drawers and doing filing and trying on clothes that may or may not fit, maybe there's something else in your life that you can do. You can order online, or when you're at the store, you may want to pick up some Jigsaw puzzles. They're a lot of fun. They occupy your time, and it's hard not to get addicted to them. But one of the fun things is that, once they are completed, you do not have to put them back in the box and break them apart. You can mount them on a piece of cardboard. What I would recommend you do is put some glue on the front of them, just your household glue, and smear it around with your fingers, and wait till it dries. It will dry transparent. And these are some of the pictures of people I know that have done with their puzzles. As you can see, they have been put together, they have been mounted onto poster board, and they are hanging on their walls in their garages, because they really have a very large selection. I think there's one more slide. Yep. So these are all puzzles that have been put together. As I say, thank you, Jason. As I say, you just take some of the household glue, the white glue, it becomes transparent, just rub it around with your fingers, make sure you get it into all the creases, let it dry. It will dry a little bit shiny. And then, the best part of it is, you can hang it up, and it'll be there forever, but you can also pretend you're a kid again, and you can peel the glue off of your fingers. That was something we always used to enjoy doing whenever we played with glue. So this is a new project you can do, and if you have time, or if you don't have time, pass the information on to somebody else. Puzzles are always fun. Remember that in between your pieces, stand up, get a little bit of exercise, and make sure you don't glue yourself to the chair, and have a good time. So, a little bit of information to pass on. We're all getting through this pandemic together, but that's a little bit of new information of things you can do at home. Thank you so much, and back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a comment to make? Ted?
You're on mute. Mayor Pro Tem.
On the occasion to share a Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Westin Hotel the other evening. And I'd like to compliment Tom Scaramellino and his team for putting together just a wonderful evening. It was complete with Santa singing, wonderful turnout, hot chocolate, plenty of chocolate chip cookies, and they did a little video. And Jason, if you'd like to play that now, please.
I'll be home for Christmas. You can count on me. Please have snow and mist and presents under the tree. Christmas Eve you find me. We're the love light.
Over 27 years, this resort has been celebrating this Christmas.
I'll be home for Christmas.
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
My dream.
The Westin Hotel Florida Spa has been a shining star in the city of Rancho Mirage.
Well done, Tom. Just congratulations. Certainly during this time of the year, we need as much spirit as we can get, and the Westin did a great job. And I'd also like to compliment, last night, the Christmas tree lighting at the Ritz Hotel. Kelly Stewart, Tiffany Gorman, and their group likewise did a magnificent job. It was well received, well fought out, and congratulations to one and all. We're very blessed to have wonderful hotel partners in our city, and we look forward to many, many more happy years together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Richard?
No, thanks, Dana.
And Charlie?
Not at this time. Thank you, Dana.
Okay. Then we'll move along to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one comment for the council today. Jason, we can go ahead and start playing the video while I make these comments. So as most of us have seen by now, after a few months of trying to figure out how to get free testing in Rancho Mirage for COVID-19, previous to this site, it was very difficult to have a convenient testing location for COVID-19. The testing sites provided by the county were on the border of the valley on each end, and so since Rancho Mirage is right in the middle, our residents were having to drive 20 or 30 minutes one way to go take a COVID test. So this is something that city staff and the council had been making a priority for several months and trying to get a site centrally located within our city to make it convenient and easy for people to take their own public health and their own health into their own hands by getting tested for COVID-19. So on Tuesday, December 1st, we launched with Curative. The testing site is a self-administered, contactless process. It's just a drive-through site. It's very simple. On Monday, we did a staff day through Curative at this site, and it went great. And anyone who got tested that day found out just how easy and painless it is, because it's an oral swab. It is not the nasal swab that had been available prior to our site opening. That site is open 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday. It mirrors the hours of our library. It is in the west parking lot of the library and observatory. After the first two and a half days, we had over 1,000 tests conducted, and we have 1,600 appointments booked. So in less than a week, that's fantastic. The site's seeing a lot of demand from our mid-valley locations, people wanting convenient, easy testing. And so the site's been going great. We continue to make modifications to the flow of the site as we gain a little bit more experience to make the experience even easier than what it is now. I'd really like to thank the Director of Marketing, Gabe Cottin, for doing all the legwork. I'd also like to thank our streets crew, who set up the traffic control, and then also our library staff, who is assisting the Curative team onsite. Now, if you're interested in getting a COVID test at our library site, it is very easy. You can pre-register online. We do recommend that you get pre-registered. It's a much faster experience. If you're just a drive-up without an appointment, it takes a little bit longer to get through, because we do take those that have appointments before those that do not. Registering online, very quick and easy, and we're excited to have this site up and launched. So just thank you to the council for your support in letting us make that happen. As a reminder, there is no cost to the city as a result of doing this. There is also no cost to the test taker either. Insurance is billed only, and if an individual does not have insurance, that is also not an issue at this testing site. You can still get tested without insurance. With that, the information can be found on the city's website. We've sent out numerous email blasts. We've put it on our social media. So you can go to the city's homepage, and there's a quick link right there, which will take you right into the scheduling of an appointment. So, very excited for that.
Isaiah, one question from Dana. Has there been, or will there be, some type of arrangements made for the actual vaccination to take place when they get it ready, which they've just started, I think yesterday was probably the first day they've done public vaccinations? Will we have anything to do with arranging them, making them available for Rancho Mirage residents? How is that going to work?
Yeah, so the way that they're distributing the vaccines is through the public health officials, and they actually have a priority list of people that are first in line. So that distribution of vaccines is not something that will flow through the city of Rancho Mirage. That is something that will be done at the state level, and then the state coordinating with the county public health officials. And it'll be, you know, kind of like testing. You know, if we remember back to the beginning of the pandemic, it was very difficult to be eligible for a COVID test, because it was limited supply. Now that we have a few months of experience under our belt, production lines have ramped up, and now testing is available to anyone, even without symptoms. So the vaccine will follow a similar process, but it is being handled by the county, state and county health public officials. And then there is a priority distribution set. You know, you think of people that are in, you know, working in our hospitals, on the front lines. Obviously, they're going to rank as a higher priority to make sure that those that are assisting the sick are protected, and it'll flow out like that. So that news is just starting to come out from the state, but we will continue to monitor what the state releases, and continue through our weekly updates to the community to distribute that information.
You recall that when it came to wearing masks, there was public opposition from certain quarters, and some people never did wear the masks. Is the vaccine going to be something that's optional, or is it going to be mandatory, which I personally hope it will be, and make sure that we're all covered? Have you got any information on that, Isaiah?
No, that's really getting outside my realm of expertise. So I have not heard of vaccines being mandatory. However, you know, I think that this is still a new and emerging topic. And again, those directives would flow through the state, through county public health officials.
Thank you.
Okay, Isaiah, can I ask you if you would explain a little bit about how important it is for people to get tested in regard to the levels of testing and the numbers that are related to the colors that we are placed into, as far as our stores being open and more freedom of activity?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I think when you look at the city's communication on why it's important to get tested, I think our motivation behind trying to get this testing site was to make it easier for people to take their own health into their hands and get tested. And so a lot of our communication on why somebody should get tested and get tested frequently is more to protect yourself and the people that you love and care about and are close to. So really, the focus of our communication efforts for why somebody should get tested is more for their own health and the health of the people around them. You know, it's just a fact, there are a percentage of people that will have COVID-19, not have any symptoms, and somebody that you come in contact with may not be so lucky. Also, getting tested helps our public health officials have a better understanding of the virus activity in our area, and it enables them to make more informed decisions with data on what is an appropriate level of opening for our economy. So testing is an extremely important, and it's been something that the state has clearly communicated as a priority from a state level. And again, it drives data. So the more, the higher percentage of our population that is getting a test, all this information goes to the people that need it, our public health professionals. They're using that information to make decisions. So the more, the higher percentage of our population that is getting tested, the better data for our public health officials. Now, obviously, with our business community, it's also important for them. So, you know, our businesses right now are in the most restrictive tier, and in order to get out of the most restrictive tier, you have to meet certain benchmarks, and you have to have certain testing numbers in order to do that. So even from a business community of opening up the economy, it gives our public health officials the data to determine, better data of when is that appropriate, and it's based off of, you know, the virus activity within our community. So, but really, when we're talking to the individual, and I think from the city's standpoint, we've always wanted to focus on why it's important for you, and the people around you, and to help our public health officials.
Thank you so much.
And that concludes my city manager comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we have a motion with respect to the minutes, please?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Johnny, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Johnny. We will now-
The consent calendar, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have four items on your consent calendar for consideration today. Item number one is to appoint me to the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees for another term. Item number two is to approve the California Choice Energy Authority entering into a long-term renewable energy agreement with Manzana Wind LLC on behalf of the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. Item number three is final acceptance of Council Chamber LED Lighting retrofit CP19356. And item number four are demands. And before we go to the council with any questions or comments, if any member of the public would like to make a public comment on any of these four items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating on the phone, you would hit *9 on your telephone to speak on one of these four consent calendar items. If you're on the Zoom app, you would just hit the Raise Hand button. Seeing no one here in person that would like to make a comment, let's go to our remote audience and Mr. Brad Anderson. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, Brad Anderson, city of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to speak on item number one of the consent calendar, that's the reappointment of the city manager to the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees as a representative of the city of Rancho Mirage. I would highly recommend that you do not consider that reappointment, and possibly put that out as an announcement to the city for volunteers, residents of the city that would want to do that, to represent the city on that board. And that's just my experience with that board. I think the legal counsel called me a disgruntled employee at one time, or applied that, anyway. And I have reason to be disgrunted over the operation of that district for the past year or years that our city manager has represented us. And that's given the increase in mosquito activity in our city and in the valley itself. So, and I guess, I did write a letter. Hopefully, people can review that. I know, once I write letters, they tend to disappear, and you can't find them again when they get submitted to the city. But I would hope that people will look that up. But I would hope that people will look that up because there is best practices when it comes to appointments. And city employees, should it be appointed to boards and commissions, just because of best practices, it's just, it just, it just looks bad. And, and I think we'd be better representative, represented by somebody else versus the city manager because he's busy, you know, with the testing locations and, and items of health. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
For the record, I'd like to clarify a misstatement made by the speaker. This is not a motion for the reappointment. This is a motion for the appointment of the mosquito vector control representative. And frankly, I would like to make that motion because I think we've had a great city manager who's been working on, working in that area now for several years. And under the consent calendar, I would, I would move that we appoint, reappoint Isaiah Hagerman. If I could have a second?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'll second that. If that's, if that's a motion separate and apart from the approval of the consent calendar, which I assume it is, I hardly agree with your motion. I think the city manager accepting the responsibility to be on the vector control benefits the city. So yes, I very much second the motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Anybody? If not, can we have a vote, please?
Okay.
Johnny?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Please continue with the consent calendar, Isaiah.
So I'm done summarizing the consent calendar, so, and there's no more public comment. So at this point, we will return it to the council for items two, three, and four. Either discussion or a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please, Johnny?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
And Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Johnny. We'll now move to the public hearing, Isaiah, item number five.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2020, next in order, approving and adopting an increase to the short-term rental annual regulatory permit charge regulated under chapter 3.25, short-term rentals of Title III, revenue and finance of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. And our finance manager, Joseph Carpenter, is going to do this presentation. Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The short-term rental annual regulatory permit charge is used to fund the administration and enforcement of the city's short-term rental program. The city engaged an independent consulting firm, Clear Source Financial Consulting, to conduct a review of the short-term rental fee. The review provides an up-to-date analysis of the city's current cost of providing fee-related services. This information must be considered by the city council as it considers potential updates to fees. The methodology of the study includes an estimate of the time and therefore cost devoted to short-term rental regulatory activity by all staff members who are engaged in that work. Those costs are compiled to determine the total cost of operating the program, which is then divided among the total number of permits issued for the year. The costs are distributed evenly across all permit holders. The proposed resolution, if passed, would increase the charge for the short-term rental annual regulatory permit from $399 to $1,700. If approved, the updated fee structure and charge would take effect January 1, 2021. This concludes my presentation. Staff and its consultant are available for any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Before we go to the council, we will open up the public hearing on this item. So any member that would like to participate in the public hearing, now is the time to do so. You would press star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Ken. This is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage for now, anyway. So I wanted to speak on this topic. I'm surprised it really isn't nobody speaking on this. Apparently, the fee is going from $399 to $1,700, and that's excessive. And I did read a few months ago concerning this in one of your budget worksheets, or whatever you call those. And I did see some financial costs shared among code compliance in this, I believe, and some software, I believe. So there's a lot of other costs that the city is bearing on this, too. But I, you know, this is just suspicious that all the cities are doing this together at the same time, or most of them, anyway. And, and I see what you're doing. You're trying to drive out these people that have vacation mentors or made that investment in our city, or your city. And, and it's just not justified. Because if you're going from $400 for a fee to $1,700, you should really cut costs at the city lever to, to make that feasible, so. And I guess we'll provide additional revenue. It's, you know, you're going to provide additional revenue, too. And it's kind of like a benefit assessment. If it doesn't benefit anybody, it shouldn't be assessed, so. And that's all I have. I'm sure you're going to pass it anyway, but that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeff Thaw.
Hi there. How are you doing?
Good.
Sorry, a little bit of a delay. Go ahead.
Oh, my apologies. I was just saying we could hear you.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Hey, I was alerted. I'm a short-term rental owner in Rancho Mirage. I file my permit fees to the city every year. I play by the rules, pay taxes. And I would have to say this is pretty disheartening to raise the fees this much this quickly. During this time especially, I don't know if any of you guys are aware that we took a massive hit on revenues in March, April, May, and June. No Coachellas, no Stagecoach, no spring break. All the things that drive visitors to the Coachella did not occur. And in doing so, didn't have any bookings. And, you know, my fixed costs for my place, and I can probably say this about everybody else, don't change whether people stay or don't stay. So, you know, it's a tough time. And I understand, I looked at your financial analysis. I get there are costs. But why are you passing the cost to police us onto us when that probably should be covered from the actual taxes that we pay to you guys? You know what I'm saying? Like, this, this shouldn't be a for-profit enterprise for you guys. Like, you know, it's almost like, you know, I'm a parolee and you're charging me to parole officer. You know, shouldn't the tax revenue that I pay pay for the oversight and pay for people to check up that the programs, you know, rules are being followed? You know, the other thing I saw, and I thought this was really shady, and I, I would love some explanation on this. The Desert Valley Building Association endorsed this. What do they have to do with this? Does anybody know? I'm just, that's a question.
This is, this is public comment. Go ahead and make your comment.
All right. So I don't, I just seems like, that seems very special interest to me. And I saw some of the board members on there, and they represent the hotel industry. You know, I'm sure you guys are going to vote for it anyhow, and there's not much I can say or do. But maybe you guys should give some thought that maybe at least doing a step-up program, where maybe it goes to, you know, $800 this year, and $1,200 next year, and $1,700 the year after, instead of just slamming people a 400% increase. I mean, that's, that's just, it's just, it's a little outlandish. I mean, even the state DMV doesn't raise fees that fast, and they're notorious for raising fees. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Star nine on your telephone, raise hand button on Zoom. Okay, seeing no one else that would like to make a comment, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will return this to the council for any comments, questions.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question.
Yes.
The date that it's supposed to begin, the, the date that this will take place will be January 1 of '21. And that seems to be the starting date for the, the new ordinance that was passed a few weeks ago. Is the reduction in the number of rentals going forward calculated in the overall cost of the new fee? It would seem to me that with a reduction in the number of people that are actually available for the short-term rental would keep that fee from going up that much. So I just wanted to check and see, you know, if we could see a reduction in the fee if the actual number of charges went down substantially beginning in 2021.
Yeah, so good question, council member. Actually, the, if the number of permit fees go down, that actually increases the permit fee. So the way the calculation works, and this is purely cost recovery, is you take your cost for enforcement, and then you divide that by the number of permits, and that gets you the fee. So if you reduce the number of permits, that increases the fee. So specifically within this fee study, currently, we have 149 short-term rental permits in gated communities that are not subject to the ban the council adopted. In this fee study, just to err on the side of caution and be a little bit more conservative with our calculation, we estimated that there were 200 permits, when in actual, there's only 149. So that was the number used in the report, 200 permits on how we calculated the fee. And so that actually made their fee a little bit lower than what it could have been. And, you know, just to, for those not familiar with, anytime a, a city raises a fee, a cost recovery fee, the DVBA is always involved. That's one of their main outreach functions, is they represent the development and business community. And so anytime a city is raising a fee, we have to go through a process of providing the fee study, holding a public hearing. So it's, it's very standard for the DVBA to be involved in that process, like they were with this one. And essentially, they just watch and look at the estimated factors that we're using in our fee study to make sure they're in line with professional standards.
Isaiah? I have a question. Is this increase have anything to do with the additional code enforcement officers?
Yes. So the primary driver of the fee is we are adding two additional short-term rental enforcement officers. So, you know, at a, from a city staff perspective, when I had staff, directed staff to prepare this fee study in review of our short-term rental enforcement, you know, it was just clear that we needed to revamp the process. And that really wasn't dependent on the policy decision of a council that you finished, I guess, a month ago. Now was, you know, about a month ago, the council was considering ordinances, and now we know what the policy decision was. You enacted a ban in public neighborhoods that's effective at the end of this year. Really, from an enforcement standpoint, from a staff standpoint, you know, it was clear that we needed to revamp the way that we're regulating this industry. And I think you're seeing that valleywide. And so these additional resources were going to be needed, no matter what the policy decision was from the council. Obviously, we needed some of that information for our fee study, which is why you're seeing this after that decision was made, because we needed to know the number of permits to put into the fee study. But the goal here is to enhance enforcement. And in order to enhance enforcement, we had to add additional resources or costs. And so that's why the permit fee is going up, is we are adding costs, and we reduce the number of permits with a ban.
Isaiah?
Yeah.
Isaiah?
Yes.
In regard to the fee, is this a fee that is evaluated yearly? So if there's a dramatic change in short-term rentals, it'll impact the future of the fee following year and so forth?
Yes.
So it's renewed every year?
It's reviewed every year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then it is subject to change, Richard, I guess, to each year. Isaiah?
I didn't hear your question, council member. Could you repeat it?
Is it renewed every year at a different level? Or it can be renewed at a different level?
We're not hearing you.
I'm sorry, council member. I can't hear your question.
Let me say it again. I'm unmuted. Let me say, is it because, as Richard said, every year will it be reviewed?
Yes, we review this on an annual basis. Doesn't mean the fee's going to change. So if the costs are what we projected and the permit numbers are what we projected, you know, there may be no change to the fee, or it may not be necessary to change the fee. If the costs are greater than expected, then we could come back and increase the fee. If the costs are not as great as what we expected, then we can reduce the fee. Given that the majority of the costs are related to staff and the addition of two new people, that's fairly easy for us to estimate, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody have any further questions of Isaiah?
Not me.
Good.
Then can I have a motion, please?
I will make the motion that the city council approve and adopt Resolution Number 2020, Next in Order, Approving and Adopting an Increase to the Short-Term Rental Annual Regulatory Permit Charge Regulated Under Chapter 3.25, Short-Term Rentals of Title III, Revenue and Finance of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code.
Second.
And we have a vote. Johnny, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the action calendar. And I guess Jesse is going to be taking this, Jesse Eckenroth?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Let me send it over to you, Isaiah, and you disperse it.
Okay. So item number six on our action calendar is Consideration of Acquisition of Easements for Public Improvements Related to Our Active Transportation Program. And Jesse Eckenroth, our Director of Public Works, will handle this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor and city council, first, I would like to thank our city attorney's office and Colin Kirkpatrick, who developed the majority of the staff report and who have assisted the engineering department with the needed documents for acquiring easements for the proposed active transportation improvements. In 2019, the city had a consultant, AECOM, perform a citywide active transportation study. The report identified key active transportation improvements for cyclists and pedestrians. The city has been diligent with improvements to the active transportation network throughout the city. And during the last two years, the city has addressed many of the cyclist improvements with the addition of bike lanes and markings throughout the city. Our focus is now shifting to the remaining high-priority pedestrian improvements. The report from AECOM stated sidewalk installations to eliminate connectivity gaps should be prioritized. And the plans attached to this staff report proposes to fill many of the gaps identified in that report. I'd like to thank our staff, Leland Cole and Chet Kahn, who developed the plans and the plat maps 100% in-house. So none of the costs, or none of the work had to go out, and it was done completely in-house. So thank you, guys, for your hard work on that. And these plans propose to construct almost one-half mile of missing sidewalks, bringing our total sidewalks from 39.8 miles to 40.2 miles. So with the completion of this half-mile, we'll have So, with the completion of this half-mile, we'll have over 40 miles of sidewalks. However, before the city can close the sidewalk gaps, we need to obtain a public access easement from the property owners to construct the improvements. The staff report before you today is just for the purposes of obtaining easements. After easements have been obtained, the city will issue a notice to bid for the construction of sidewalks. The results of the notice to bid will be brought to council when the bidding period concludes, and the council will award a contract to construct the improvements at that time. The staff report before you today is only for the easement process. Since this process of easement acquisition could involve multiple back-and-forth processes between the various property owners, staff is recommending delegating responsibility to the city manager to accept the offers of dedication. The project was budgeted in the current fiscal year budget. The acquisition portion of the project is anticipated to only absorb a small fraction of the budget for various title reports. No budget adjustment is needed. And after easements are obtained, staff will bring a recommendation for the construction award to the council at a future council meeting. So, staff is excited to get these missing sidewalk links installed. When we first went out and got the report from AECOM, it was kind of daunting to look at all the recommendations they had, but we've chewed through a lot of those recommendations, and we are getting near the end of all the recommendations and have done a bulk of the work. So, we're excited. This is one of the last things we have to do, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Jesse? Jesse, we're excited about it, too.
Mr. Mayor, if we could go to public comment on this item before the council?
Sure.
Okay, so, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would press star nine on your telephone, or press the raise hand button on Zoom, seeing no one here in person that would like to comment. We will go back to our remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Brad Anderson, City Rancho Mirage. I remember when this came before the board before, and of course, I thought it was a good idea, too. But given the time and circumstances of this perceived emergency that we're under health emergency, or virus emergency, I would suggest that the city reserve all the financing that it can by not spending it senselessly. And this is one of those senseless activities that doesn't need to be performed at this time. And, what else am I gonna say? And just seeing how the city has reacted with the new power of authority that they have, I would recommend that you do not have the city manager represent the city in easement negotiations, because there is a increased authority that they may have over the homeowner, or not homeowner, but the property owner. So, and also, gaining easements at this time, that's put a potential increase of burden on the property owner for liberally from these new sidewalks and easements onto their property. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on this item? Star nine on your telephone, raise hand button on Zoom. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and I'll return this to the council.
And we have a motion or a discussion, whichever you'd like. It would seem to me that one of the most essential things that city government can do is to provide safe sidewalks for pedestrians in their city, and to put this off to some unknown future time is patently absurd. And I strongly recommend that we pass this measure.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add one clarifying point, these easements are being donated to the city from the property owner, and nobody's forcing them to do that. So, there's no negotiations. The property owner is freely giving these easements to the city so that we can construct safety improvements, as you mentioned.
Isaiah, thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Mayor, I concur. This is an issue that should not be delayed. It's one of safety. And with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that the city council delegate authority to the city manager to accept offers of dedication for public right-of-way and construction of public improvements thereon, and take other related actions to effectuate the same as set forth below.
Second. Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Johnny, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
And Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number seven and turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven on our agenda is our COVID-19 State of Emergency Update and Related Actions, and I will turn this over to our Director of Marketing, Gabe Cottin.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mr. Mayor, city council and staff, so today, we present before you the COVID update. So, as in the past, we've come each council meeting, each, the first council meeting of the month, to extend our face covering order. However, this time is slightly different because the state, on November 16th, passed a new guidance for the use of face coverings, which had a few more restrictions on it than the previous one. So, our city attorney's office and your marketing department and city manager are recommending that we adopt the same guidance and amend ours that would match the state of California, so those are connected. So, we do have that action, and then any other action that's deemed necessary for today. And then, a quick update on the Great Plates Program. We did receive word that it will be extended through January 7th. So, our stats that we give each council meeting, we're currently up to 305 participants enrolled. Through today, we've delivered 151,000 meals since May 8th. And the total funds to Rancho Mirage restaurants is now at 3.3 million, over 3.3 million. And the city's cost share for that portion has grown to 208,000. And there are currently 17 participating local restaurants that represent over 337 employees. So, we're excited that that program has been extended another 30 days into January, and so we'll be ready for more updates as they develop. That concludes our COVID-19 report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gabe. And I'd just like to add, right before this meeting, the governor was having a press conference about an update. So, we've had staff monitoring that, so there may be some additional communication out from the city as a result of that due to the conflict with this meeting. We will find out afterwards from the staff that is listening in what we need to do. Obviously, we've all seen in the news, you know, the virus activity has increased over the past few weeks, and are, right now, the concerning factor is that the hospitalization rates are continuing to climb and exceeded the previous high. So, the governor has said publicly a couple times leading up to today that he was concerned about the level of activity and could bring in additional measures depending on how our hospitals are doing. We've heard it from our local hospital, Eisenhower Hospital, that they're just seeing pretty substantial increases over the last few weeks, which is concerning for all of us out there. It's just an extra reminder to wear your mask, you know, social distancing, washing your hands, and doing things to protect you and your family. Don't go into large gatherings and things like that. So, we will keep you updated as we get the results of that press conference after this meeting. With that, before-
Isaiah, let me ask you a question. In California, is it mandatory if you're out off your property? Did you have to wear a mask, or is it still optional?
So, a mask is mandatory when you're out in any business. You know, obviously, there's the, you know, if you're driving in a car by yourself, there's no requirement to wear a mask. If you're outside and not within six feet of somebody, there's no requirement to wear a mask. But if you go inside any building or are outside and can't socially distance, then you're required to wear a face cover. And our local, the face covering order that you're considering today is in line with those rules from the state, and that just helps us out a little bit at the local level by having our own order. But there is an order from the state as well. So, even if we didn't have our local one, there's still a state one.
Good. Isaiah, question about restaurants in Rancho Mirage?
Yeah, if I can just get you to hold that for one minute, council member. I want to make sure we don't skip the public comment on this. So, at this point, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. Star nine on your telephone, or the raise hand button on Zoom. Seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you. I am dominating this meeting today. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. And right now, I just want to verify that I'm against the mandated orders of face coverings or face masks being worn in the city. And you have the authority as a city councilor. The city councilor apparently is not aware of all the laws of the land of the state of California, and that's concerning when they're passing ordinance, like, not orders, but restrictions like this onto the citizens. So, and it's disappointing, really. It's not surprising, but it's disappointing. The testing location at the library, that's great. Have a testing location. And maybe you have an incentive, maybe give something away to encourage people to come in, and then you can drive the numbers up that way, too. So, that's a concern. But anyway, the Great Plates, eh, I don't want to say anything negative because it's the revenue driver for the city, and it's all the city's about now. So, I would like to speak on the closed session topics when they come available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that would like to make a public comment, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting, and I'll turn it back over to the council for any questions or comments.
Is there any questions, comments, or a motion?
We'll make a motion that the city council, A, adopt and approve the proposed order from the city manager-director of emergency services of the city of Rancho Mirage, requiring face coverings be worn in accordance with the November 16, 2020 guidance for the use of face coverings issued by the California Department of Public Health, and B, take any action deemed necessary.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? And we'll have a vote, please, Johnny?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Johnny. Okay, we will go to the closed session calendar, and any member of the public that would wish to make a public comment on closed session, now is the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone, seeing that we have no one here in person. Let's go to our remote audience, and Brad, go ahead.
Great, thank you again. It's the muting. It takes me a while to unmute. But anyway, again, this is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage, and you have some closed session topics. It looks like the same ones that were mentioned last week that you took an hour to discuss, and never had any action on. So, my comments are the same. Hopefully, the city will stop litigating against people, and I noticed you had some outside councilor involved, and that's great, because I think our city attorney could use the help. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that would like to make a comment, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and I will turn this over to our city attorney for him to summarize the closed session items. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Actually, today, the only two items that I need to discuss with the council are items number two and three. Number two is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. That's the case known as Hometown Colony versus City of Rancho Mirage. And that's pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. I also need to discuss with the council some existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Normally, we are required to identify the name of the case, but in this case, since we are in existing settlement negotiations, we believe that the disclosure would jeopardize those settlement negotiations if we were to disclose the name of this particular case. So, those are the only two items that I have on today's closed session calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnear. Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up? Seeing nothing, we'll adjourn this portion of today's meeting. And Isaiah, what will be the process with respect to the closed session?
So, the council now will adjourn into closed session. All right, it is 3:30, and we are finished with closed session, and I am here to report that there were no reportable actions taken during closed session on closed session agenda item number two or three. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.